For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening. Welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting, December 21st, 2015. How do I order please?
Johnson. Nielsen. Nowak. Sexton. Paul Agora.
Please rise for the plate.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everyone. I have the opportunity to read the minutes from regular session, December 7th, 2015. Any modifications to the agenda this evening? Citizen appearing before council on agenda and managing items allowed by management to address your concerns. This is the only time during the meeting, this is the only time during the meeting you allow to address council. If you do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our record. The incentive given this evening is long. Be with me. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $363,521.91. B is the approval of a 1.5% increase to election inspectors wages. C is the collection of 2016 property taxes for the Alpena Homeland, the Alpona Educational Service District. D is three mayoral reappointments to the planning commission for a three-year term expiring November 1st, 2018, Ryan Dorff, Paul Sabrin, and Steve Gilmore. E, two council reappointments to the wildlife sanctuary for a three-year term expiring December 1st, 2018, Elizabeth Littler and Bernie Medica. F, one city manager reappointment to the housing commission for a five-year term expiring December 1, 2020, is Michael Curley. G, one mayoral appointment to the historic district study commission for a four-year term expiring December 1st, 2019, Patricia Moa. And H is approval of parade held in the city limits, 2015.
Nielsen. Nowak. Sexton. Paul Agora. Johnson.
Presentations. This evening we have recognition of annual employee award recipients for the Citywide Pride Program.
Kathy, pardon? The Citywide Pride Program started in 2000 and it was a way for citizens and employees to recognize our staff for doing what they've done and going above and beyond what is expected of them on a regular basis. We typically had one person per department and this year we have two per safety department and unfortunately we do have a Dr. Cooper certificate that he was not able to come tonight. But what it is, is the symbol is just giving somebody a slip of paper saying thank you and then you were telling what they did and there's also a list of other ideas on that just to help you through the program. And that is as simple as it is and any employee has got four hours of personal time to use throughout the calendar year as the approval of their department.
Kathy, where does one get this slip?
We have this slip with any department head or they can always reach me or should I always tell them they will vote.
Hey. I'm gonna try and find where the department is. Okay, City of Alpena Administration, this is Michael Shesky. Stay right up here. We'll stay and we'll get a group hold of them. From the clerical department is Leland Brune. From the Department of Public Works, John Hi. From the Police Department, this is Cole, City High, Ethan Lester. And Jason Colkin.
Everyone's, you know, one last, but Doug's the one.
Oh, Doug's not here. Someone want Play-Doh?
No accepting the award.
It's so nice.
Leland, get in front there.
Get in front.
I gotta be able to see you there.
Oh, that's nice.
We're all looking.
Okay, next up, the National Fire Academy's recognition of Bill Forbush as Executive Fire Officer.
Okay. It's not very often that I get to be involved in presentations, so this is a very special one. Actually, it started before I became city manager, when Bill Forbush, I assume, requested to enter into this program. It's called the Executive Fire Officer Program and I'm going to go through and I'll say out the names rather than giving you four different acronyms which I could do a test on later to see how many of you actually know what they stand for. You have the Department of Homeland Security, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which probably is better known as FEMA, United States Fire Administration, and the National Fire Academy have put together a program that began in the mid-'80s called the Executive Fire Officer Program. This is a program that is a distinguished program where people who meet and have certain qualifications, apply and then are accepted into a program, into this program, which is a four-year, basically like a postgraduate program. You must have a bachelor's degree, you must be a fire chief or a senior chief officer, and then they have a selection process that you go through and an application you fill out to be included. The four-year program consists of four separate tracks, one each year. This is a program where you go for two years, or two years, two weeks, four times a year. And the program is totally funded through FEMA, except for some small amounts of food or meals that are paid for by the individual, in this case by the city. Everything else is paid for. And you spend two intensive weeks over these four years, two weeks each year. The first year track is on executive development, the second year on executive analysis, a community risk reduction, the third year on executive analysis of fire service operations and emergency management, and the last year on executive leadership. After going through that and then being judged and doing a variety of in-class studies, field trips, and kind of lab-type work, you're not done when you finish that. You then have to do what are called ARPs, or Applied Research Projects, of which there are one after each year and you have six months to complete these. These are almost like thesis papers that are based on research work and on topics chosen by the individual that relate to really real-world scenarios or situations or issues that they've, that often in many cases they face within the department that they work or in the region or area that they serve. So Bill had to do four of these papers. Each one was due within six months of the end of the track and he completed the last one not that long ago and he did indeed receive certification after this four years. It is a very distinguished award. There are some 30,000 fire chiefs in the United States. This program began in '85 and there are less than 3,500 that have received this distinction. For us, I think it says a great deal about both Bill personally and professionally as a fire officer and a fire chief, but also about our department and how we operate, where we have been and where we are going. I think it lends itself greatly to our department and the changes that are occurring in the EMS and fire fighting sectors that have occurred over the last few years and are constantly changing, where you really need to begin to think outside the box. I think you'll see one of those in the coming weeks that will be later presented by the chief to council for consideration. And I think a program such as this is what helps, help create that environment where we do look at things outside the box and I think it's something that we see not only from the chief himself, but from the officers under him and even the firefighter paramedics who also, I believe, have that same sense of thinking outside the box of what is the best way to do the job. And I think that has led to our department being one of the premier ones, not only in northeast lower Michigan, but I think all of northern lower Michigan and maybe even into the UP as a top-notch and A1 service that we provide. So with that, I'd like to have the mayor come forward with me and we'd like to present to Bill this certificate as Executive Fire Officer.
All right, skipping down to Report of Officers. A, Resolution Number 2015-15, Adoption of Defined Contribution.
Bear with me, it's a somewhat lengthy memo, but hopefully it won't put anybody to sleep fairly, if not too quickly.
They're all sneaking out anyway.
Yeah, they are. Now, if this affects you, you may want to stay, but hang on whatever. Beginning in 2009 and 10, new DPW clerical and administrative employees were no longer eligible to participate in the city's defined benefit pension plan. In its place, the city established a defined contribution retirement plan whereby the city would contribute a specific percentage of an employee's annual wages to their plan. No employee contribution was required except for DPW, which in accordance with its collective bargaining agreement, an employee is required to contribute 2% in order to receive the city's contribution. At the time, the DC plan was established. The city used its existing 457B, which is actually a deferred compensation plan, as its defined contribution vehicle. The deferred compensation is actually a supplemental program that allowed all employees who are under the pension to be able to also do additional savings for retirement. Those in the defined contribution also had that option as well. Right now, there are a total of 10 employees that are under our defined contribution plan. There are seven in DPW, one clerical, and two in admin. Earlier this year, while I was attending a Michigan Public Employee Labor Relations Association summer meeting, I was actually there with Kathy, yeah, she's still here. It came to my attention that the 457B deferred compensation plan that we were using is really not the best choice as a vehicle for a defined contribution retirement plan. Instead, what is recommended is what's called a 401A. This is a public employee, employee, I should state, retirement plan. The advantages of it are, is that since it is considered, all contributions to it are considered contributions and not deferred compensation or wages, you pay no tax at all, either the city nor the employee. Under our deferred compensation plan, both the city and the employee do pay social security and Medicare taxes. They don't pay federal or state. Those are paid when you retire and you actually take the money out. But under the defined contribution with a 401, it's all considered just a contribution. So there are no taxes at all paid, including the social security and Medicare. So that's a savings for the employee because they're not having to pay that tax. And the same on the city, when it makes a contribution, it doesn't have to pay its share of the taxes well. So it's a savings for both parties. Also, the, under the 457, there is an aggregate amount that you can contribute to that plan, both when you take the employee and the employer together, under the law, and that changes each year. But when we had, using the 457 as our retirement defined contribution, that, all that money was going towards that limit. Now, anything going into the 401 does not go into the limit at all or affect anything with a 457. It is totally separate. Now, under the 401A plan, pre-tax employee contributions are only allowed if they are made mandatory. Under our current contract with both DPW and with clerical and our benefit summary for admin employees, none of those had mandatory contribution requirements. The closest was DPW, which said, "If you contribute two, we'll contribute five." But it's not considered mandatory under the law because they could decide not to contribute, they wouldn't get the city contribution either, but it was still their choice. So we went to the employees, explained the new plan, and asked them amongst those who would be affected, who are in the defined contribution plan, would they want to have a mandatory contribution level for the employee? It was 100% yes from all three groups. So what we did is we did MOUs, or Memos of Understanding, with the union, the two unions, clerical and DPW, stating that there would be a 2% mandatory contribution and then the cities would also contribute based on whatever was in the contract. In this case, it is 5% for DPW, 4% for clerical. The two admin employees also wanted to go mandatory, so again, they will contribute 2% and the city will contribute 4%. These are all subject to negotiation as far as these contribution levels. So the MOUs are through the end of the current contract, then we will negotiate. They can leave that mandatory amount the same, they can increase the percentage or lower it. And the city's, of course, percentage can also go up or down. For the admin, since we don't have a contract, that will be reviewed annually, taking input from the two employees or as that increases, we get more employees, from the employees themselves as to what they would like to do for the employee contribution. The 401A plan, for the most part, is going to mirror the, our deferred comp plan. Right now, we have AXA Equitable Insurance Company and Nationwide Financial Services as our plan providers, they will continue to be so. In fact, both of them have worked very closely, especially with Karen, but with the two of us, through emails and conference calls to put this 401A plan together. Basically, the general features of it are that the, all DPW clerical and administrative employees hired on or before July 1st of 2017 are fully vested from the moment they're hired. The reason that is, is because right now in our current contracts with DPW and clerical, there is no mention of vesting requirements. So it means the ones who are in it now have been vested, so we said to be fair, and the contract doesn't add that language, through the end of those contracts, they would be automatically vested. And we said the same thing will be for admin. They are automatically vested and any new employees that will come in before that date would also be that way. We would like to negotiate, hopefully we'll be able to, is for employees hired on July 1st of 2017 or later, they will have a vesting schedule that would then need to be approved by both the unions and then we would put it into the admin as well. So that will be for a future discussion. And if that is added, then it would change our, our plan document that we have for the 401A plan. We'd simply have to amend it, it's very simple to amend, to amend. As I said before, the mandatory contribution right now is 2%, and that is one that can change through negotiation. Any employee who wants to contribute more than that, then if, they want to contribute 4% rather than 2, 2 of that will go into the 401A, the other 2% will go into their deferred comp. They cannot put any voluntary contribution into the 401A because that becomes an after-tax contribution and it becomes for the, in the clerical treasurers and a bookkeeping nightmare. So that is at our discretion of whether we wanted to allow that and we said no, because we have a vehicle where you can make those voluntary contributions. If they want to make them more, they can put them into the other program. The normal retirement age will be the same as what we have currently in our ordinances for our pension program. That way, everybody will be treated the same. You won't have where if you're in the benefit or the pension program, you have one set of retirement criteria and you have a different one if you're in the defined contribution. We wanted to make sure that that was consistent for everybody. Employee pre-tax payroll reductions will be made with every payroll, beginning with the first payroll in January. The city's contribution will be made in, it's supposed to also be the first payroll in January that the city will make. And that will be made on the previous year's wages, calendar year. That is why when we actually set an effective date for this program or this plan, it is not January 1st, 2016, but January 1st, 2015, because we're using those year's wages. And then after each year, it will always be in January we'll contribute. For the deferred comp, we make that contribution from the city every July that will go in for that program. You can have early withdrawals, but it's only under hardship conditions that are defined in the plan. Everything such as if you're going to go under foreclosure, severe medical emergencies, I can't remember.
There might be one more.
Yeah, there may be one other one. And that can be no more than 50% of whatever you are vested, so you can't remove the entire amount. And that has to be approved by Karen, I believe. She would have to sign off on that. But it does have to be a very specific hardship. Also, all the money that was part of the defined contribution that has already over the last several years gone into the 457 deferred comp plan, that money will stay there. It cannot be transferred over to the 401 plan. So the 401 really does begin in terms of actual dollars going into it, beginning in January of next year, 2016. As I said before, both the AXA and Nationwide representatives have been instrumental in helping us work through the, putting together the plan document and how the plan is going to be structured. Also then, we presented this plan to the, as I said, to all the members and they have authorized us to move ahead with it and in the format that I have described. The AXA and Nationwide representatives that will either be here or may be able to do it even online or by phone to get everybody signed up, the attendance to have them sign up before that first payroll, so that then that money, their contributions can automatically start flowing into the, into the plan. Although this, this change did require a great deal of research and numerous conference calls to finalize the details, the result, we believe will be a better defined contribution retirement plan for both the city and the employees. And I would, in conclusion, would like to particularly thank Karen for doing the bulk of the work. Yes, I had guidance and input, but if it hadn't been for her, I'm not sure we would be before you tonight asking you to approve this. We had a very tight timeline and she kept us, kept working with the plan providing representatives to keep things moving forward. And I also want to thank all the employees who put, who sat through and none of them fell asleep by presenting the new plan and what their options were and in the end supported it 100% and feel very good about that. Basically, your job tonight is we have a resolution which we, you are required to adopt that would adopt the plan and that would allow everything else to move forward, to get everybody signed up and moving forward with the plan that I think was, it was overdue, it was simply, the city had never done a defined contribution plan and it was more of a lack of knowledge. And once I kind of stumbled on it, then we began to make those changes. Do any questions? I'll try to answer them and I'll turn them over to Karen.
I think you covered it.
Covered it pretty good.
Good job.
Yeah, that's pretty good. I mean, everything from, you say you fall on it, but, but there's definitely a value in going to conferences and further educating, for sure, so. Excellent. I think it was, I mean, I'd thank somebody, but it sounds more like I'd have to thank everybody, which is appropriate as well, so. It looks good. I don't know that I need to read the resolution. It's pretty much says what Greg just said. I can read it again if you guys want to hear it.
I can give you a copy.
Pretty much says what Greg just said, just a little bit highlighted, so. Any other discussion or move to resolve?
I will approve Resolution 2015-15.
15. 15.
15.
Small print.
No.
No, it's yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, council policy statement number 30A, light duty.
You worked that out well, didn't you?
A few years ago, we started realizing a huge increase in our workers' comp rates. And we knew we needed to do something about it. We've had the light duty policy in place, but we knew we needed to fine tune some things. So Greg, Clay, to myself and a few others in charge of a safety committee, and one of the things that we are slowly working on is looking at policies and making sure they're tight and they are precise in what we actually need them to be. So this is the first one you will see over probably the course of the year as we will update some others as we find time and looking at Greg. So this is just kind of cinching this up so that it's very clear for the employees and they know what they're into. The first thing I want to just point out is the priority is always going to be given to an employee that was injured on the job. It's just more fair to them. It's better for us because it brings our comp rates down and the sooner they get back to work, even if it's doing something very simple like watching tapes or filing or bad entry, then they're being productive for us and it's more productive for the city in, as a whole. I can say that cinching this up has helped us this year and our comp claims have come down and we have brought more people back to work that have been on comp quicker, knowing that this is in place and we're working on trying to become safer. So that's the first thing I wanted to point out. The light duty is intended for 90 days. However, if there is a light at the end of the tunnel and we know that the person is going to be back to work in a very short period of time, we have the full doctor's documentation indicating such, with the city manager's approval, we will allow them to go beyond the 90 days. However, if there's no light at the end of the tunnel, then the 90, or the light duty is no longer extended beyond that 90 days. So there's many variables that go into that, but we wanted to make sure that that was very clear in here. We want our healthcare providers to be in the state of Michigan. Rarely would we have anybody even asked to go outside the state of Michigan. If by chance, though, that there, it's a specialty, we talked about Mayo Clinic and we have a lot of people that they rely on that type of a clinic. So with, again, the city manager's approval, that would be a consideration, but we wanted to make sure that they did everything they could first within the state of Michigan. It would make it easier for us and our comp carrier if it's a comp accident. We added in here that light duty could be coordinated with not only the city manager, but human resources, which I talk to Greg on a regular basis anyway, or his designated and what we mean by that is if a department head needs to get involved so that we know that the work is available, that Greg can designate them to make that approval. All employees on a regular basis are given an overview of what the comp, of what the light duty consists of. They will get a overview, again, if you approve this, so that they know all the changes that have been made. And I do meet with department heads and also the supervisors as often as I can when there's changes or questions. I also am available 24/7 because we have 24/7 employees and I do have gotten calls oftentimes late in the evening, what do we do and how do we take care of this? So we keep them as, I guess, abreast of the situation as we can, but sometimes something happens that none of us expected, so we keep them updated on them periodically so they know what to expect. On page four, it's just indicating what some of the light duties might consist of. Again, tracking information down on page four, also under F, is going to be just making sure that it's clear who is going to keep track of those things. It was not clear in the past. On page five, one thing that Cindy did catch and was brought to our attention that does need to be corrected, it's in this, the third paragraph down, that should say completed. So if an employee has completed their light duty. So just want to bring that to your attention. And again, it's just making sure that everybody's clear that this is for 90 days unless approved by the city manager. And we want to make sure that everybody is well aware of this. And I will open this up to questions because light duty is not something that all businesses and organizations do do, but it is very productive for us and it has been successful. Yes?
Maybe I just missed it, but is it mandatory that we offer light duty? Because there might be positions where it's tricky or maybe there's already somebody on light duty in a field.
And we have had that, for instance, over at our Department of Public Works, that has been more difficult to bring somebody back to light duty. And that's because Tammy is the sole fixture for doing data entry and light record keeping and such. So bringing them back has been more difficult. We may have had a doctor say, you know, Joe Schmo can come back and he can do the data entry or he can do filing, but we don't have those type of things for them. So we would have something like maybe painting, putting together some benches that would be not heavy lifting, but you have to be really careful because of the twisting and turning. So yes, we have had that instance that we have not been able to bring somebody back. But if we can bring them back, they cannot deny the light duty. And there's obviously several reasons for that. And one is because we, if a doctor says they're capable, we need to get them back and that helps our work comp rates significantly.
I'm not sure. You correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we've ever done this, but technically, we could have somebody do light duty even outside of their department if there was other work that they could do that they could be fulfilling a useful function for the city. It wouldn't have to be, let's say, within DPW. It could be something at City Hall or whatever that would fulfill that, that payroll.
That's correct. We have not done that since I've been here.
Yeah, I don't think.
But I do believe that they had years ago. We don't know the situation, but we certainly could do that if we had, we could use a health emergency to fit them in.
Yeah, that was my question as well, as part of your new contract, if somebody is renewing a contract that he's certain he wants this position and you take him.
There, each contract actually says references, this particular policy, and said it incorporated that reference. So then they go by this, all of them.
And it's beneficial for them as well. Yeah, thanks. That's great. And if we all have to take a policy and send it updated on a regular basis.
Well, we're working on it.
Thank you. Any other questions? For just here?
Yeah. You need to approve it.
I will approve them. I'm going to tell them.
Sexton?
Yeah.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Next up bids, water plant chemical feed pumps.
Sure was nice to have Kathy here tonight. I hope she can join us more often.
I was about to say Kathy's on here.
Yeah. I'm going to get a hate email. On October 26th, excuse me, the city received an open pump, open bids for replacement of chemical feed pumps supplied with electric power. These were slated for replacement and actually after we issued those bids, we had one of the pumps that was slated for replacement fail and we had to do an emergency purchase to purchase that replacement pump and get it installed. So following receipt of the bid, we asked for a modification from the only and low bidder to basically change it to reflect only supplying three pumps, but we still needed them to wire the monitoring and all the other elements into that fourth pump that we had already purchased and installed. The original bid received was in the amount of $20,880 for the four pumps. Revised proposal after deleting the one pump but still requiring the monitoring wiring for all four pumps was $17,870. The city has $2,000 in the current budget for replacement of these pumps. It is my recommendation the city engineer at the city council authorized the contract with RS Technical Services, the amount of $17,870 per the revised proposal dated November 16, 2015. These are specialty pumps, they pump sodium hydrochloride, bleach, and liquid alum in the water treatment process. We did send this out to four different companies to solicit bids. We only did get the one bid from RS Technical. So it's certainly not that we didn't try to get solicit more bids, but for whatever reason, we just got the one.
Okay, I was going to ask a question on that, Rich. Was there any, I didn't read the bid package myself directly, but was there any, are the pumps kind of exclusive to the person that bid? Because you do have a line in here where you expected, you sent out for, but it wasn't unexpected, you're only going to see, receive the one. I didn't know if it was like, you know, they had exclusive distributorship or was it the scope of work that kind of limited?
Just the scope of work, I think, or limited it because as an example, USA Blue Book was one, they basically, they provide all different kinds of pumps, but it may have been a situation they couldn't do the wiring. Typically, they're just a sub-wire. We bid SNA Company local because sometimes they have been on that stuff, but we elected not to.
Maybe we authorize the contract with RS Technical Services as presented?
Second.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Thank you, Rich. Down to unfinished business, mobile food vehicle ordinance modifications.
All right, I'll try to, try to keep this short, but we'll see what happens. So September, council was presented with a proposed modification of the zoning ordinance from the planning commission in regard to mobile food vehicles, food trucks. The language included regulations that would allow mobile food vehicles to operate in all zoning districts, but some regulations as, where they could not operate and written permission was required by the property owner for any location where they would operate. Specific language can be found included in the memo I included from September 15. After reviewing the proposed amendments by the planning commission, city council supported the new text, but asked the planning commission to revisit some of the language that council had some concerns with. Staff presented these concerns with additional explanation in the attached memo to the planning commission on October 9. Planning commission reviewed the city council's thoughts on the proposed language and discussed each concern individually. City council initially had suggested modifying the definition of mobile food vehicle to exempt vehicles that stop for fewer than 15 minutes, such as ice cream trucks, from the ordinance and restrict the, restrict the food truck, restrict food trucks from operating in residential areas. Planning commission felt that that changed up to the definition to exempt a vehicle that would move more than 15 minutes would be difficult to enforce as food trucks could move a few feet and it could claim this exemption. And suggest, planning commission suggested that some people may want to have food trucks at the graduation parties or something similar. They also felt it caused confusion to the food truck operators as they may not be aware of the zoning district boundaries and they felt that the, felt that the market would keep them out of the residential areas naturally. The second concern, council noted, council noted to encourage food trucks that they should be allowed to operate or they'd like to see them allowed to operate within the right-of-way of the central business district as there are larger groups of pedestrians in this area. Planning commission noting concern, this could be a potential safety hazard for pedestrians and it would be problematic if a mobile food vehicle parked directly in front of a restaurant with a zero-foot front property setback. Planning commission felt that operating in parking areas, parking areas outside of the right-of-way in the, in the central business district would be sufficient. Council also, the third point, council had a, thought a permit process was important to have contact information from the mobile food vendors on hand as well as ensure the correct insurance and approvals. Council suggested annual fee, but a fee that would be kept to a minimal amount. Planning commission noted that at this point, there would not appear to be the amount of vendors that would require this structure and in order to make it easy to operate in the city, they felt if possible, a paid permit would not be needed. Planning commission did want to note that they were very appreciative of the city council's concerns and considered each one before sending it back to council. The text recommended by the planning commission can be found attached to September 15 memo.
You could have just said they said no.
I personally am not that going to keep it short, so.
He said no.
I've taught you about.
No. I mentioned to Adam earlier when we discussed this, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, I knew what the planning commission had done and what their thoughts were and I actually kind of applauded them to not just turn around and do what council suggested. I think if my math is right, there's nine of us working, nine elected people working on this with staff as well. So it, it could be a little, take a little bit of time, I guess, but, but I was glad to see that they, you know, that they discussed it thoroughly and made their recommendation back to us not to take our, just take our recommendations. But where that leaves us now is, is up to question, I guess, as far as what we want to do as a council. We can, we can basically, I mean, planning commission, several of yous were on it or two of yous, I've never sat in the planning commission, but you guys were. So from that perspective, what do we, what do we want to do as far as we can plug back in what we'd like to plug in? We can go with their recommendation and just leave it as currently written. It's kind of up to us, I guess, as far as.
Either way, we have to work with Bill and get an ordinance form, obviously.
Yeah.
So you'll see it again either way, but we can't finish it tonight.
Right, yeah, we can't finish it tonight, but I don't want to, I want to give you at least some direction on what to write so you're not, you know, spending all that time and then bringing it back and then we, you know.
When I, when I was on planning commission, I found all the members to be very thorough as well as whoever the staff person was at the time. And, I mean, they are there for a reason and I think we need to try to listen to them. And unless we have really good, good reasons for not taking their advice, I think we need to let them do their jobs and then take their advice when we can. I mean, I'm sure there will be times when it, it wouldn't be appropriate, but this does seem to be one of those times when we ought to listen to them.
The only thing I would like to see, I guess, that we recommended that they didn't particularly care for is to have some type of permit process in place. And, and I guess when I read their, when I read theirs that a paid permit is not needed at this time because there doesn't appear to be the amount of them, I would just soon do that right off the get-go. Because let's just say we get four just this coming summer and there's no permit process. We have, the city has no idea who they are or where they are. And then all of a sudden, next fall, we say, wow, we should get a permitting process in place and then we got to go back and find those. And so I guess that would be the only thing as far as this, the residential areas and the setbacks and the downtown, I mean, I'm willing to let that go as it is and possibly make some changes if there's some huge issues concerning either safety or other issues downtown. I'm really not that strongly opposed to either way. But I would like to see some kind of permit. It just, if nothing else, it doesn't even have to cost anything, but maybe whatever, something in administrative fees that Karen might be able to suggest, but just something so we know their contact information and their business name and something like that just so they're just not popping up everywhere and someone calls and complains about them and we, we have no, we can't even call them, so.
Doesn't the health department, don't they have to go through the health department?
If they're preparing the food in a kitchen on the truck, then yes, they have to be licensed with the health department.
I see. See, you're concerned if they're not registered with the health department and they're not registered with us, then they aren't registered.
Or if they're causing havoc of some kind or, I mean, if you know it's going to be negative, somebody calls, they're not going to say, hey, there was great pizza on this truck. They're going to call and they're going to have an issue with them, either where they're parked or what they're doing or the noise they're making and whether they're, whether they have all the licenses for the health department. And whether they're, whether they have all the licenses for the health department is up to the, to the health department, they're the governing body for that, so we're not gonna do that, but just to have some kind of contact information, so Greg or Joel or somebody takes a complaint, they know who they should be calling.
We could handle that as we do rental registration. We don't charge for that, as long as you do it, and you're not, you know, you're not operating without it. We do have a penalty fee if you do that. They could, if you say, it actually, it could be through Karen's office, it could be through the planning office, that they simply have a form, all we're asking you to do is to come in and fill it out. Name, contact information, things of this sort, whatever other information we might want, and then at least we have it on file, or if we need to get ahold of them for some reason, rather than calling the health department to see if they have something. And if they don't, then we still have nothing, so. That would be fairly simple to do, because it's not like you're gonna have, you know, 50 or 100 of these, you're gonna have a few, probably a handful at the most.
I personally would agree with the mayor's comments, and seems they're responsible not to have a permit, just as a way to keep track, and I don't think we'd have to charge them. I wasn't here for the original discussion. The only thing that I'm not comfortable with, and I saw this come up before, is not having a buffer between a food truck and a restaurant. I know we had one incident last year where they parked smack right in front of somebody else's restaurant, and I don't think that was appreciated. So I guess that was, it's one thing I would like to see, is it's counterproductive, is you're not really providing an extra service, you're just kind of honing in on somebody else's customer base.
And I think that's where the planning commission was going, when they were referring to the keeping, keeping them off the right-of-way in the central business district, to that extent.
So that would pretty much take care of that.
They're already not allowing trunk lines, which is gonna be 23 and 32, but it's just a couple blocks or second, three blocks a second, I think, that would be a concern.
Do you think that would kind of naturally take care of itself, or they'll happen to add in within so many feet of a restaurant?
Because they're gonna have, the only place in the downtown, other than on the streets, are gonna either be in a city parking lot, which case they'd have to get our permission, or in a private parking lot. And so they're not gonna be directly in front of a restaurant storefront, you know, like The Fresh Palace, or, well, certainly not Take My Deli, because that's how they mean, okay? The same with the Owl, they would be away from those, because they wouldn't be able to be on the street.
I would like to see them allowed in CBD, we know that, I think that brings people downtown, more people we have downtown, if that affects something. I do like to see the permit process, and first, allowing them in residential areas. I don't have an issue with that, but could we do it so they're allowed, if there's an event, they're allowed? If there's a bigger parking lot, they can be allowed, but to travel the neighborhoods, and I know that planning commission said that, you know, it might be zoning where the boundaries are, so they didn't want to disallow them, but we have really good maps of the boundaries in the city of Alpena, I don't think it's that difficult to follow them. But I would actually like to see in the ordinance, the three things that we've asked to do, because I think they're good. And I'm not saying that planning commission didn't do diligence, because they did, and I appreciate that what they've done on this, because I know it's been a long process, but I would like to see all three incorporated into the ordinance.
Were, because I wasn't here, were you guys pretty much in agreement on those three things?
Yeah, remember the discussion that? Yeah, for the most part. I guess the argument I've heard about the downtown district or parking out in front of a brick and mortar restaurant, is that if somebody's heading into a brick and mortar restaurant to get, their mind is set on getting the food that's in the restaurant, they're gonna walk right past the food truck, for the most part. I mean, I don't know, I mean, that's just an argument I heard. I can't, I guess I can't imagine that if I was heading into, whatever, I won't even mention them, a restaurant, I guess, but if I was, if I was heading in there, I don't think a food truck would change my mind, all of a sudden, I'd say, oh, that's here, maybe I'll get that instead, maybe I would, I don't know. But how much business they would lose, I guess we're, that's where I find myself defending somebody that's not here to defend themselves. If there was, if every restaurant owner in town was sitting in here right now, or they came up one at a time, or even a representative came up and said, I don't want food trucks sitting in front of my, but this has been on our agenda, this for the third time, and I, I don't know, have we had any brick and mortar food vendor, or restaurant owner in here saying, I don't want them in? So I feel like I'm making a decision that they're not, that no one's really said, not to my face anyhow, so. That's my argument for allowing them in the business district, I guess, is that I just haven't heard from anyone that says, I don't, I don't want them here. I don't wanna defend them for no reason. The last food truck owned a restaurant as well, so, they had both, so we'd be restricting them from parking in their own, in front of their own business, I guess, I don't know. The residential area is, I just, I don't know, I'm willing to go with what, with what the majority wants on that, and I was willing to go with what the planning commission said to just open it up and modify it later if we get complaints from someone in a residence, because most of the, most of the things we fear probably really aren't even logistical for a food truck to drive out, ring a bell.
I imagine they would want to do that.
If they, if they sat in a parking lot somewhere, in a residential area, they would be just in a parking lot somewhere, I can't imagine they'd be bothering anybody, so. I would just soon, and that's how it is right now, right? That the planning commission would just as soon not have any restrictions on them in residential neighborhoods?
Correct, yeah.
But I guess let's just take one at a time, is everybody okay with that, or would you like to restrict them from the residential neighborhoods? I guess for me, I'd just soon wait to hear complaints, but.
Well, it just seems, in my opinion, it just seems odd to allow them in the residential area, because that's not where they wanna go anyway. If they went to a residential area, it would be because somebody's having an event and they want them there. So they're having a wedding, or graduation party, or a block party.
Or a church event.
Then they want them there. Well, that, we could allow them there for that.
Who would do, who would allow them to do that? What, what would be the?
Well, it's probably the same process when we closed down streets, or people come and ask for permission to, you know, do whatever you can, right?
Well, some of that, when it's our private property, we wouldn't get involved in that. I mean, you could put language in to state that any special event, you know, either needs approval, you know, needs to be approved by the planning department, or, you know, zoning, whatever, or that it's simply allowed. As a special event, however you wanted to find that, if it's a one day, if you only allow it for a day, if it's, it can be a multi-day, whatever.
So you're saying just, just to leave it allowed, as long as there's an event there?
Right.
So, so someone calls and says, there's a food truck that just keeps circling my block.
Looking for a party.
Looking for a party.
Somebody else's lot.
I just don't know what the complaint might be, so I chose that one, I don't know. But they were having, but it was some nuisance, obviously, it's gonna be a nuisance, so for someone to call. So if someone calls and there's a nuisance, it's gonna end up on Joel's desk, he's gonna send somebody over there. If there's no event in sight, then obviously he can ask them to, and they would know that upfront, because they would, when they came in to get their permit, they would get a copy of the ordinance, which is another great reason to have a permit process, so we can make sure that we've actually handed them our rules, so.
I hate to ask this, but what if there's, if there's alcohol with food, does that change anything? Like, some food trucks really serve alcohol instead, or is that a whole different?
That's a whole different ball of wax there. If we were getting into a mobile, a mobile vehicle, that would be, I don't think the state liquor commission allows it, however, there are, like, for instance, in Traverse City, where they have designated areas for food trucks, there are also, you know, basically bars or restaurants that will actually allow them to have alcohol in that.
That would be a whole different process.
Yeah, because that's at a particular site, and then their license would probably be restricted to that site, when they get a liquor license.
Okay. So we're good on the permit process?
Yes.
And where do we, where do we, as, where do we stand on the, on the restrictions in the, in the?
CBD.
CBD.
Again, we're only really talking about the right-of-way, because right now, the planning commission has already allowed them in lots of private, or called liquor, that's in CBD, it's a permission for a lot of lots.
I would like them allowed, but I'm just wondering.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with the right-of-way or the parking lots either, you know, I mean, I'm kind of in the middle of the area here, too. Everything that I've researched on this has told me the same thing, that while a food truck coming into an area and being cut into in initial business throughout the years, and then the nicer weather and stuff like that, they actually draw people down to the area, and then everybody benefits from that, so they kind of get back on, you know, some equal playing field there for a while, so.
Cindy, outside of the parking lot, where would you even put one? And I mean, I don't know if we have room downtown, outside of the parking lots, to really have them in the right-of-way anyway, do we?
They'd have to go into a parking space.
Parking's not allowed.
That would be, you know, they may take up two, whatever, and then they can only be there for the time allowed, so if it's a two-hour, or three-hour, or whatever the limit is.
Two hours.
Two hours is, that's what they get there, they can't stay beyond that.
Unless they pulled out.
Yeah, unless they just move, if there's an empty space in front, they move up to the next one. But that would be really all they could do, you'd be really seeing like Second, probably River Park Place, I don't know about Water Street, I don't know if there'd be enough traffic out there for that, so you'd be pretty limited on really probably where they would go, on the right-of-way. So it's not like you're gonna be, and if cars are parked there, you know, they're not gonna be able to come in and reserve the spot for a certain time, it's open to whoever, so it's gonna be a real hit and miss for them, as to whether they can ever get on the street.
Probably leave it how it is then, personally.
I don't, either way, I mean, I'm right in the middle of this one, you know, so.
You wanna break the, try to break it?
I think there should be a law.
A law.
Say no, Matt, and then we'll make Mike break his head.
No, they pulled the safety card.
Well, the hope is that, that the window's gonna be out the sidewalk side, and out on the street side.
I wanna, I guess, like I said, I'm a little bit, I mean, we got an issue with parking that you hear about every day, so I gotta take that into consideration a little bit, and I would like to do, I would like to show some kind of compromise to the other council or commission that worked on this, as much as, you know, put in the thought process as much as we have. So we're already gonna do the permit process, which they didn't want to do, and we're gonna, and we're gonna, we're gonna restrict the residential area, which they didn't want to do, so I guess I would just side with them and go with, to keep them out of the CBD, BBD. And I'm mainly because it's just, there's already not enough parking down there already. I can't even imagine, like I said, we're thinking, well, we don't have any food trucks right now, which I don't think we even do that move around, but next summer, we got three, and all three of them are in the downtown, and all three of them take up two parking places each, think we're not gonna hear about that? We're gonna hear about that. So that's where I would stand with that, so I would just as soon, there's plenty of parking lots for them to be in, I think I would go with that, is where I'm leaning.
Okay, so in summary.
Hang this job now, aren't you?
I have this right. We would be like to permit lower no fee.
No fee then?
They're allowed downtown, keep them out of the right-of-way, and restrict residential zoning districts except to allow for special events. Does that sound about right? All right, I'll work with Bill, and we'll get some language together, and you guys can review that. Switch it all around, I'll ring back. I will say, it sounds like, I mean, 98% of the issues regarding this, everyone's agreeing, I'm sure, like, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Adam.
Oh, it sounded like the alarm.
I thought it was the horn outside.
Outside, are you?
The vacuum.
It's a vacuum. Okay, new business, Second Avenue Bridge Preventive Maintenance Design Services.
The city has been working with Tetra Tech on the inspection designing of rehabilitation of the Second Avenue Bridge as a preventative maintenance activity. They previously completed a detailed inspection report, which, I mean, council authorized about $79,000 for them to complete the report. Basically what this is, they crawled over inside, underneath, all over that bridge, and by going this route, we hopefully will eliminate any surprises as we get into construction, if they have looked at every, every bearing, every bolt, going through the process. Based on that detailed inspection, Tetra Tech has provided a proposal for the design services. I've attached a copy, which outlines the work that will be performed during the design phase. The work will be performed as a time and materials contract not to exceed $248,581. It should be noted that all design and inspection service costs are the responsibility of the city of Alpena. The construction phase will be funded with 90% federal funds, 5% state funds, and 5% local funds. The construction portion is estimated at $2,172,000. The city had budgeted $260,000 last fiscal year for these design services. However, the funding did not get carried over to the 2015-16 budget, and went into fund balance. To facilitate this design work, the money will need to be transferred from the fund balance to line item 202-451-783202. It is my recommendation to city engineer that city council authorize the design services contract with Tetra Tech with a time and materials not to exceed cost of $248,581. I also recommend approval of the attached budget, and transferring the funding from the fund balance to the appropriate line item. And this, this is through the critical bridge funds, which we did apply for, we were successful, actually, a gentleman who works for Tetra Tech now, worked for another company, and they put the application together, and was successful in achieving that. The state did modify our funding slightly, reduced it a little bit, and did award us the $2,172,000 for the rehab. In talking to a gentleman from Tetra Tech, we feel that, or he feels, that that number, based on the work that needs to be performed, from this detailed analysis, detailed inspection, we should be right in the ballpark. Big-ticket items are structural steel sandblasting and painting, that, because it all has to be contained, we're right over the river, we have to contain it, we have to protect the environment, they've got a pretty hefty estimate in there, in what they put together, but still, he feels that we are, we are close to that, or within that budget number. Now, I also sit on the Northern Regional Bridge Committee, Bridge for the state of Michigan, and we look at all these costs. The problem is, is with the economy, the way it's been for the last few years, a lot of bridge contractors have folded, gone out and just stopped performing bridge work. Now, there's, there's two or three in the state. They kind of, kind of have a monopoly on it, and dictate the prices. There were some bridges that were bidding UP, that did not get any bids, they bid them three times, could not get a bid for. So, you know, we'll just have to wait and see. We've probably got about a year, we've got to start the programming through MDOT, get a number of different steps that we have to abide by, probably looking at late summer bid. Talking to them, a lot of this work could be done in the winter. One of the concerns that was raised was, you know, when we get to the construction phase, is it gonna close Second Avenue? Sometimes, there's gonna be some days where it's gonna have to be some short periods of time, but it looks, it sounds like most of it can be done with the bridge open and functioning traffic, so those are our steps on down the road. Right now, like I said, we're just looking at the design services with Tetra Tech.
It does not be in the bid proposal. It does not be in bid proposal and stuff like that. Rich, did you have an opportunity to compare the design phase cost with other communities or a bridge of similar size or anything like that? Are they in line?
Sitting on the bridge committee, I've seen some of these numbers. For a standard bridge, you know, I always say a standard bridge, non-movable bridge, you're probably in that 7% to 8%, we're dealing with a movable bridge, so therefore the costs are escalating. We're about 11%, which I don't think is way out of line.
Rich, on the 2.172, if that, if the cost exceeds that, do we split it the same way, 95 to 5?
Basically, the way they set it up is that with the bridge program, you have a 10%, you basically have a 10% cushion, so we could actually go up to 21,000, 210,000 over on it, but if it exceeds by more than that, then there's some options that the bridge committee can explore. This was, this actually, because it is a movable bridge, we, the regional bridge committee did not vote on it, or we didn't rank it, but we did commit funding towards it from the North Region, then it's referred to the State Bridge Committee, which handles all movable bridges or large bridge projects.
Do you feel like this is a five-year fix, 10-year fix, 20-year fix? I mean, for?
Well, the last, the last one was done in the, in the late 80s, I would say 88, so, you know, we've gotten 12, 27 years on that. Basically, there's a lot, there's a lot of, there's a lot of spalling concrete, surface concrete work that needs to be done. Structurally, the bridge is in really good shape. There's some, there's some steel components that have rusted, need to be replaced. They actually recommended one repair that we're gonna have our DPW mechanic, he has the capabilities to go in and do that repair. He's gonna be working on that this winter. But it, you know, structurally and mechanically, I actually, one of, one of the gentlemen that was here doing the inspection designed the 88 rehab on this thing, he was back up there, and you could actually, there's a little hand wheel in there that you can open the bridge with a hand wheel. It's, it's just geared and balanced that well. So it, it's good in that aspect that we've got that same history coming through.
It's a neat aspect of our community and is worth maintaining, that's for sure.
Well, I mean, going back 20 years ago, when I first heard him, there was some talk of going out there and welding or closing. We couldn't, we couldn't do that, but it's certainly getting the use now, which is good for it. It actually is better than sitting there like it did for 15 years, getting opened once or twice a year.
Questions?
Karen, you want two separate motions, probably?
No, one's good.
I'm gonna be authorize design service contract with Tetra Tech not to exceed $248,581 and also approve the budget amendment transferring funding from the fund balance to the line item.
Got three of them.
We all like it.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noahk?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora?
Thank you, Rich.
I'm gonna be adjourned to closed session.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noahk?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Wallagora? Johnson?
You are watching All About Alpena.